Chuck Toons.
Present.
Catulet, present. Len Welsh is not present. As you know, this is a closed session and the public comment -- I’m sorry. As you know, this is a closed session and we’ll take public comments before that. I do want to say a couple of things. We have had an opportunity to review and digest the facts surrounding the police handling of the Barrow matter. In our closed session, we’ll have our first opportunity to discuss with the entire board and our counsel what our options are at this point. Our goal is to be fair to the community and to the community, to be reasoned and measured in our response, taking into consideration the interests of everyone. We welcome your comments, but because we have a lot to discuss, we’re going to limit the public comments to 25 minutes, which is permitted by our policy manual, and each speaker will have five minutes. So for those of you who’d like to speak, if you’ll come up to the podium, we’ll be happy to hear you. And if you would state your name. It is optional to say how long you’ve been in Kensington, but you’re welcome to.
I would like to know first why is he present? Why is he present?
I mean, he’s a good guy, but why is he present?
Okay, you’re welcome.
If my students were present when my faculty is evaluating me, I would not be happy with that.
Okay. Well, you’re welcome to make your comments now, Mr. Padian.
What do you guys think about that?
Mr. Padian, you’re welcome to make your comments. If you have comments to make, you’re welcome to make them if you prefer.
What you got for two hours on Thursday here, and I applaud you for sitting through it. My name’s Kevin Padian. Not trying to stifle it was more than a raw nerve reaction. It was not temporary or ephemeral. It was more than a knee-jerk response to a single, isolated egregious incident. It went right to the heart of how this board, I’m referring to the 2014 board, and its continuing people and its chief of police, general manager have been doing business. So the question is whether you learned anything from that experience. Len, sorry.
Sorry.
You got bit. No, you got bit, man. What you heard is that this community is outraged by the actions of the officer who had his gun and equipment stolen by a prostitute he was illegally visiting in Reno last May. Moral turpitude aside, they are outraged that he was so professionally negligent and that he broke the law, and they don’t want him around their children. He has to be terminated, and if you think otherwise, you will face civil war, and it will be the parents of this community who will wage it. But more importantly, for your consideration tonight, the community is outraged that the chief postponed handling this incident almost indefinitely, all the while the officer in question was negotiating the Rose Police Contract. They are outraged at the board for not writing heard on the chief to demand a timely resolution of this issue, and they’re furious that none of this surfaced before the last election. Having been apparently deliberately continued through that interval by silent assent of the chief and the board, I think you understand that a great number of citizens regard this as a conspiracy, and whether true or false, right or wrong, many of your supporters say they would never have voted for you had they known. Now we have a situation where a Mill Valley businessman is suing the Marin County Drug Inspection Team and others who collaborated on the raid of his business last fall. The related charges were largely dismissed by the judge because the drug inspectors were so sloppy, as he put it. One of that team appears to have been Sergeant Barrow, but you can correct me, but over five years, he’s been on loan to the West County Drug Team for a huge percentage of his time, for God knows what reason, because we clearly have nothing for him to do here and tons of money to burn sending our cops elsewhere and paying overtime. Now we’re in a situation where the board and its expensive lawyer have to confer about what to do about this cop because the chief of police has let him participate in these busts even though he was under investigation. What kind of judgment is that? So let’s unpack this just a little. Currently, the sergeant in question is one of the defendants in that suit. Okay, in the course of duty, you think about whether to defend him, but let’s say this Mill Valley guy’s lawyer finds out, if he hasn’t already and he will, about the Reno incident and the moral turpitude stuff and that he was under investigation by the chief, who’s still willing to put this cop on the regional drug team. This is all hypothetical, but the facts are not out yet because you can’t talk about it. So yes, Mr. Hanson Bridges, we know about the Giglio and the Brady cases that provide context for this issue. The U.S. Supreme Court has long held that evidence tending to impeach the character or testimony of prosecution witness or that is otherwise helpful to the defense, such as prior bad conduct of a police officer witness, must be turned over to the defense in a timely manner before trial through the prosecution. So now the chief of police might be brought into this lawsuit to be asked, when did you know about what this cop did? When did you start your investigation? Why do you still allow him on the regional drug team while he’s under investigation? And why did it take you so long to settle this issue, which is still unsettled? And now the chief, potentially, and by extension, the District of Kensington, could become defendants in this case, and here comes another lawsuit we have to defend. That is what Mr. Hanson Bridges is here to discuss tonight in closed session. So what in the world else don’t we know about other issues that are going on here? Well, one thing we have to ask is whether the chief informed the Marin District Attorney about Sergeant Barrow’s Reno incident and his continuing investigation, because if he did, likely no DA would want that officer on his drug bus. And if he didn’t inform the DA, hiding it from the process is improper, could be viewed as obstruction, according to legal advice. For this reason, responsible police chiefs are very selective in the assignments they give to Giglio impaired officers to avoid hurting a case. But not here, maybe. So, Mr. Hanson Bridges, I hope you’re prepared to explain to the board members about the cases U.S. versus Giglio and U.S. versus Brady, because they might be relevant here. I’m not sure there’s enough disdain in the world for this kind of mismanagement and the supervision that lets it continue. And you three are still considering keeping Mr. Harmon on public payroll, really? Why are you dithering about whether to renew his contract? This is a joke and a liability, all of us. You need a unanimous decision tonight to end this contract. Thank you.
My name is Ryan Anderson. I’m a Kensington resident. Thank you for scheduling this special session tonight. It’s an important matter, and thank you for receiving public comments from members of our community. As you consider next steps regarding the overall performance and possible contract extension for general manager and chief of police, I present for your consideration four key questions relating to risk management, trust, judgment, and professionalism. Firstly, on risk. In considering performance, you might consider risk. Have there been shortcomings or failures by the GM COP in risk management for the community of Kensington and for the department? As was asked during public comments at the prior meeting, were there oversights or other actions that created a potential scenario where the integrity of officer-witness testimony might be called into question? The U.S. Department of Justice Office of Community-Oriented Policing Services has published a guide to the investigative process. Section 4 provides clear guidance on administrative leave for both criminal investigations and administrative misconduct charges. The guide discusses the benefits, including risk reduction of placing an officer on administrative leave at the beginning of an investigation. So you might ask, in assessing performance, were there shortcomings related to risk Number two, trust. Have the actions of the GM COP substantially degraded the trust between our community and the police department? The Internal Association of Chiefs of Police and the Department of Justice Guide on Building Trust Between the Police and Citizens They Serve suggests the following success factors for COPs. Preventing misconducts within their department. Properly addressing misconduct should it occur. Building and maintaining community trust and confidence. Creating and maintaining an ethical work environment. And developing and sustaining trust between their organizations and the communities that they serve. So, in assessing performance, have the actions of GM COP resulted in increased or decreased levels of trust? On the IACP 5 success factors related to trust, how has GM COP performed? Creating and maintaining an ethical work environment, and I can give you notes after. Item three, judgment. Did GM COP demonstrate good judgment in his exercise of policing duties and leadership managerial duties? For leaders and stewards of our communities, good judgment means performing actions to the highest standards. Not only does good judgment require avoidance of actual conflicts of interest, but also taking actions that minimize perceived conflicts of interest, like those noted in KPPCSD Policy 102031. The California Code of Judicial Ethics provides a useful benchmark on judgment. The test for appearance of improprieties is whether a person aware of the facts might reasonably entertain a doubt about the ability to act with integrity, impartiality, and competence. Whether wearing a GM hat or a COP hat, questions about judgment should be few and far between, and when they arise, an effective leader who is performing well should have a clear strategy and exercise good judgment in decisions to engage, educate, and manage to satisfactory resolutions. In cases where the general public is forbidden from having full visibility into personnel or disciplinary matters, you might ask, has GM COP exercised good judgment and acted in line with community values? Within the boundaries of what is legally permitted, where judgments are in line with the community’s expectations? So using judgment as a performance benchmark, how has the GM COP performed? And lastly, professionalism. Using nationally recognized policing best practices and other objective measures of professionalism, has GM COP demonstrated levels of professionalism at or exceeding those measures for policing? And how has he performed in his management and leadership as role as GM? Has the general manager performed at or above the expectations for core competencies outlined in Section 2 of our own Policies and Procedures Manual? Were there any shortcomings in the performance criteria listed in subsections we have for financial management and board relations? If the general manager role were separated from chief of police role, might the separation of roles to people with specialized skill sets lead to higher performance and greater professionalism for both roles? Has the GM COP addressed disciplinary issues in line with nationally recognized law enforcement best practices and professionalism? Internal affairs units operating in other U.S. jurisdictions provide very clear guidance on best practices and goals for how long internal investigation should last. The U.S. Department of Justice Office for Community-Oriented Policing Services Standards and Guidelines for Internal Affairs states, quote, “It is preferable to conclude investigations within 180 days,” end of quote. Other jurisdictions and the Inspector General OIG Office have the following targets to complete internal investigations. FBI, 180 days; DEA, 180 days; U.S. Marshal Service, 90 days; the State of Florida, 45 days; the City of Tucson, 30 days; the State of New Jersey, 30 days. So in assessing professionalism, you might ask, if the GM COP was engaged in an internal investigation that was taking substantially longer to conclude than the norm, why? If there were unique factors to any particular case, were appropriate steps taken, such as requesting additional assistance to accelerate the investigation? Also, did GM COP take sufficient steps to ensure that the public would not perceive abnormal delays in a negative light? Trust, risk management, professionalism, and judgment. As our representatives, you have a responsibility to this community to make the hard decisions. You, the board, will be judged on whether your decisions in this matter are in the best interest of the people of Kensington. Are you creating conditions for trust, risk management, professionalism, and good judgment? Are you acting as the fiscal stewards for the entire community, ensuring we have sufficient resources for non-police expenses, such as regular and ongoing investment into the month-to-month care and maintenance of our parks and buildings? Do you have a solid strategy for the future to put the best possible leadership and governance in place for the hard-working members of our police department? There may be cases where doing what is right for Kensington runs contrary to your own political interests. I urge you to do what is right for our community and right for the long-term health of the police department. These are challenging times. To rebuild, we will require strong leadership from the board, from the GM and the chief of police, and from community partners. Kensington needs a capable team for a fresh start to restore community trust. The eyes of the community and now the nation are on you. How you act will be remembered long after you have left the board, and the time to act is now, tonight. I sincerely thank you for your service to our community. Thank you for your service to our community, and I wish you the best in navigating through our current challenges. Thank you.
My name is Leonard Schwartzberg. As Rahm Emanuel has famously said, “It’s a shame to waste a good crisis.” The board meeting Thursday night was a watershed. The community came out in force aroused by the non-feasance, misfeasance, and malfeasance by those official, whose official duty it is to serve the people of Kensington. We are emerging from a culture of special interest and cover-up that has burdened us significantly. Harmon must go. It was in large measure the climate of intimidation, bullying, and insult to the intelligence of our people that initially caused alarm, but there’s more to it, and there has been from the beginning. A small group of community people joined together to exercise our First Amendment rights, to have our voices heard and petitioned the government by filing what has become the notorious writ of mandate. The climate of arrogance, intimidation, and disregard for First Amendment rights underlies what happened in Reno. It was that climate that seduced Keith Barrow into believing that he was above the law. We all bear some moral responsibility for the climate that contributed to his impaired judgment and conduct because we were asleep. How to deal with Barrow is a complex matter that calls for dispassionate and professional analysis. Again, Harmon must go. He is the person most directly responsible for ruining, for running our police department -- ruining is okay -- for running our police department down into the governance swamp where we find ourselves. He is a toxin, and though there is a good deal more that constitutes cost for dismissal, he has become the focal point of a bitterly divided community that is alone, that alone is reason enough for him to go. His contract is expired, and even under his now-passed contract, he is an at-will employee who can be let go without cause. Though he showed no compassion for the career-ending firing of some of our better officers, it would seem best to negotiate his leaving with a severance agreement that does not add to the taint he has already brought upon himself and that helps the community recover As you, the KPPCSD Board, there is much you can do to set matters right, and until you, your will to do that is tested, talk of a recall is premature. Recall would be a source of further divisiveness and delay the process of healing that is so important to the life of our community. At the recent Finance Committee meeting, a member of the board made a statement that augurs for hope. He said that we need a town hall meeting to hear from the community what it wants in the context of what it’s willing to pay for. The goal is agreeable, except that the process cannot begin with a town meeting, a town hall meeting. There are methods for achieving that goal and going beyond. If you, the board, as presently established, truly undertakes to use our community’s rich human resources in good faith, in good faith, you can facilitate our fixing ourselves and much more. There’s no doubt in my mind that there are many who would step forward to help. We have the opportunity to model a special way small communities of goodwill and its intelligent application can govern themselves. I hope you take up that challenge.
My name is Deborah Cassargian, and I live on St. Albans Road. And I’ve carefully timed my comments, so these are very short. I have no associations with anyone on the police force other than I’m served and protected by them as a resident. At first, I chose to remain silent to avoid the public ridicule that comes with anyone who might speak up against this community’s angry mob. But I decided to give voice tonight to a quieter, more reflective group of residents who you don’t often hear from. I’m grateful that my longtime friends from outside Kensington cannot log on to the social, the local social media sites. I’m truly ashamed and embarrassed of the tenor and the quality of dialogue in this community. I thought an educated community like ours could do better and be more constructive. Please consider that the loud voices on social media and in these meetings do not represent all of Kensington. All five of you were placed in your positions by a tried-and-true democratic voting process, and I’m proud to say, with a huge portion of citizens participating. All five of you were elected to your positions by majority of the community, so please serve the greater public interest, not only the interests of the loudest members. Please use this opportunity to not contribute to divisiveness, but rather to build your new team. I trust you, and I trust the chief and general manager.
My name is Michael Cassargian. I also live on St. Albans Road. I speak to you as a private citizen today, not in any official capacity nor representing anyone else. There’s no need to overreact. There are community members who ask that instead you deliberate and act with compassion and caring and forgiveness, not with revenge and anger. There are community members who ask that you act with understanding and fairness, and that is particularly so when you are discussing human frailties. There are those that think our chief of police and general manager deserve a fair and measured employee evaluation, not one determined by an angry mob. There are those who believe police officers deserve a fair contract with a race, and soon. There are those who do not believe that prostitution should even be a crime. The officer has already paid for his folly a hundredfold. There are those of us who are proud to have Kensington Police protect our families. And there are those of us who think that five of our officers taking a road trip to Reno with their wives on their personal time off is a terrific sign of how well they work together and what a tight team they are. That is exactly who I want serving and protecting, my family. I’d like to close with the words in the New York Times a few days ago, which have absolutely nothing to do with Kensington and absolutely everything to do with Kensington. Here’s the quote. “It is barbaric how we respond to scandal these days. When someone violates a public trust, we try to purge and ostracize him. A sort of Roman Colosseum culture takes over, leaving no place for mercy.” By now, the script is familiar. Some famous person does something wrong. The internet, the most impersonal of mediums, erupts with contempt and mockery. The offender issues a paltry half-apology, which only inflames the public even more. The pounding cry for resignation builds until capitulation comes. Public passion is spent, and the spotlight moves on to the next scandal. The civic fabric would be stronger if, instead of trying to sever relationships with those who have done wrong, we tried to repair them, if we tried forgiveness instead of exiling. Thank you.
I just want to make a comment, and that is, I hope that we will treat every speaker with respect, regardless of whether you agree with them. We are sitting up here listening with respect to each speaker that comes up. I think the audience should behave in the same way.
My name is Dr. Frank Lossi. I live at 27 Edwin Drive with my partner Barbara Steinberg. I am not here to give any kind of major kind of address, and I haven’t prepared anything formal. What I mainly want to communicate is that it seems to me that there is or should be an inherent kind of contradiction or tension between a city manager or general manager, on the one hand, and a chief of police in the same community. I don’t believe that those two should be in the same person ever, and I -- I say this not because of any animosity towards Chief Harmon or towards Mr. Harmon, whom I’ve never heard addressed that way, but he should be, insofar as he’s our city manager or general manager. It’s an aspect of that kind of dichotomy that I think should intrinsically inform a distinction and a degree of interaction between a city manager and a chief of police that I would like to see developed in this community. And for that reason, not for any animosity that I have toward any individual on the police force or the chief, that I recommend that his current contract be allowed to lapse, and in its place, we create a new system where the city manager and the chief of police are two entirely separate people who recognize that their provinces of work are totally different and need to be sometimes opposed to one another.
My name is Ciara Wood. I want to say first that I know that this is an incredibly emotional time, and as a former director, I would like to offer some suggestions about beyond, far beyond the current misadventures in Reno, how the management issue, how it can be looked at in a far less emotional kind of way. Many of you know that I’m a former director of the KPPCSD. Directors, you understand that I know that you can’t talk about personnel issues publicly. But there are some things you can do, and I recommend these to you, I recommend this to the community. You can certainly count up all the police officer complaints and the internal investigation during Mr. Harmon’s tenure as police chief and general manager. Tally up the legal fees, and each one of these, each one of these comes with legal fees. Tally up the legal fees that we, the citizenry of Kensington, have paid for those investigations. Make a list. These are really simple things. These are not emotional things. Make a list of the officers and the civilian personnel who have left or have been forced out of their positions with the police department and Community Services District. Look at the turnovers in the position of district secretary, administrative assistant, beginning with the firing of Helen Horowitz, all the way to the departure of Anita Gardine, who brought a sexual harassment claim against the district, which was sustained by the court. In the matter of Ms. Gardine’s suit, it having been upheld by the court, you should be inquiring as to which officers were involved, but specifically what specific disciplinary action, if any, was taken against them for their behavior. And I say this because this is very much indicative of a police department culture, and I think that really is a management issue, because you do not separate, you don’t separate management from what goes on in the culture. Really, they are related. Tally up, if you will, the massive legal fees for the last several years, not including those associated with the petitioner’s suit or the garbage contract. Those costs should have been of grave concern to Mr. Harmon, it is capacity of general manager, because spending all that money on legal fees has, well, it’s undermined the financial stability and the sustainability of our community, and I think it certainly contributed to depleting the district’s financial reserves. In the matter of the petitioner’s suit, as general manager, did Mr. Harmon advise you, the board, to just take another vote?
Would we still let pay attention?
Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, okay. It has to do with the petitioner’s suit, and my question as general manager, did Mr. Harmon advise you to just take another vote on his salary package and be done with the matter, or did he fail to caution the board as to the repercussions and ramifications? In short, the potential depletion of district financial reserves inherent in legal action. What counsel did you receive from the general manager regarding the 6% increase sought by Bayview Refuse, which turned into a 21% increase to Kensington ratepayers based on arbitration? Was it Mr. Harmon’s inaction in dealing with Bayview Refuse Company, or by your own instruction that the 6% increase was not accepted? We don’t know. You need to consider all this tonight, all this management and mismanagement. And this all proceeds, and this is not about Mr., the misadventures in Reno. I also understand, as a former director, how easy it is, you know, it’s so easy. Directors develop a very personal relationship with the police chief, general manager. It happens all the time. There’s a real sense of direct trust, and certainly not questioning that anything might not be the way you’re told it is. So whenever, so what happens is that whenever there’s public criticism or questioning of the management, this is like something out of the Western movies we watched when we were kids. All of a sudden, all the board will circle the wagons to protect against the citizens. wagons to protect against the citizens who are asking questions. I think that the very best thing that you can do is to look at this methodically, go through it, look at the math, and don't pay an outside consultant to do your thinking for you. Because, no, please, guys, please, because we've spent so much money on outside consultants, and we've spent so much money on legal fees, and you know, we have some other very important things to do in Kensington with that money. And it has to do with the park, it has to do with this building, but it also has to do with our living together again in a way that we value all the potential contributions of all the citizenry. Thank you.
Before I make my remarks, my name is Andrew Reed, and before I make my remarks closer to the mic, I wanted to make a quick observation that I really appreciate the constructive comments that so many people have made tonight. The tenor seems to be moving towards collaboration, and that's very refreshing, and I appreciate that. What I wanted to say to the board is to thank you for being thorough in the discharge of your responsibilities. I think everybody would agree, this isn't easy. I would encourage, let me go back to the top, I agree that it's important to be deliberate, thorough, and fair in consideration of the chief of police contract renewal. These matters can have far-reaching consequences and must be allowed due process and time. Now that the board finally has been briefed by the chief of police on the Barrow incident, it can fully evaluate how well the chief performed in this matter. Again, thank you for this. And turning back to the community, I would encourage those community members who are conflating the Barrow incident with settled issues and matters of obvious self-interest to stop doing this. I concur with the prior speaker. This behavior impedes the collaboration needed for all of us to move forward together. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I am Cog Quirga. My wife and I have lived in Kensington about 24 years. I was not politically active at all for 20 years, and then something happened in May and June of '12 that sort of upset me a little bit, and I came to the June meeting, and I expressed my feeling, which I have done pretty much every board meeting. I don't think I've missed any board meeting other than when I was out of town. I asked a board president a couple of years ago to appoint me to the finance committee, which he did, and I have attended every finance committee during that time. I am usually the guy who speaks out on financial issues. There are actually people in this place who come to regular meetings who think that I care about nothing but finances. That's not true. I happen to think that if you have equity, you have options, and if you have liquid equity, you have even more options. And if you have options as a person, or district, or business, then life is better. So anyway, I speak out on financial issues. The chief and I have had some issues on financial decisions, and so on, and so on. But to get back to what happened in Reno, and a lot of people have talked about it, I think it should have been resolved, and it wasn't. I also think the board probably should have asked to see where are we with this issue, but it didn't. What really matters is, where do we go from here? And I was disappointed that we had people booing last Thursday. I thought it was inappropriate. I think, where we ought to go from here, if I, if I was king of the world, which I'm not, I would, I would ask the chief to, when you see Greg Harmon, it says general manager, chief, I would like to see him move more toward the general manager type of position. And we send our chief to some conventions every year or so. I would much rather have the chief pick a class, whether it's a UC extension or whatever, to give him some additional management skills. That would be good for the district, that would be good for the chief. If I were to set up the next contract for the chief, there would be some items in there that are measurable, that are management-type of issues that he would get evaluated on. That would be me. The other thing, I was, one more thing. Do I have another minute? There were people here the other day who said, forget the contract. Now, I, the finance committee worked on the, on a contract for the police officers, and there were people who said, we are the employer. But if we are the employer, we also have the responsibility to come up with a contract. Now, if the contract is not, the present contract is not what we want, then we ought to come up with the contract, and we ought to come up with it quick. It's not fair to the people to be basically without a contract for 19 months. Now, I know we did the 3% for one year, but there ought to be a contract. If we want to be an employer, we ought to be a fair employer. I would, I would, we hire the chief, I would set some management conditions in there, and I would surely give the officers a contract. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Garen Corbett. I personally do not feel like I am part of a mob, and I do have a lot of compassion for all of those involved. That said, I have compassion for the most, for the members of this community who have had their trust shaken, and for those who have been fighting for years for tighter fiscal management, better management of our district. I have compassion for myself as a relatively new homeowner for the liabilities that will be on my property tax bills for decades ahead. So, you know, yes, this is an unfortunate situation. Having 250 people come to a meeting on a Thursday night on hard metal chairs, that wasn't a mob. Those were people who, their homes are their biggest, their investment, their residence, their homes, their community. This is important. It's not about mob. It isn't about the Roman Colosseum. It's about, does the chief and the GM have the confidence of the community? And unfortunately, he does not. So I think, actually, your decision is unfortunately quite straightforward. So yes, go through the process. I think there's a lot of evidence over years that makes this unfortunately even more straightforward to make a decision. But I think recent events make it clear. When you're a member of management, I'm a director, I can be terminated at any time. That's what you get when you're in a leadership position. Sometimes, you're just not the right fit. I don't want us to be spending time and money on investiga, excuse me, investigations. I just want us to move forward, and I don't think we can move forward in the current construct we have. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Simon Brofman. First of all, I want to thank everyone who's attended tonight. It means so much to our community that the community is involved. Unfortunately, this is not a happy time, but I appreciate your involvement. I ran on, when I ran for, to sit on this board, I ran for open and responsive government. That's what I expect from you board members and from you, chief of police. I would like to know, what is the metric that we're going to use here to judge the officer who, as far as I'm concerned, broke the law in Reno and broke our level of trust with him? And few of the board members, what is your level? Where's that line in the sand where you have made a mistake by not keeping us informed properly and not keeping the two newest members of the board informed properly? Where's that line? And we need to know where it is. We need to be able to trust you again. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Lorraine Osmundson, and I've been in Kensington since 1959. And so I want you all to give me a little respect here. By the way, I was wondering if the board members had ever inoculated their children for measles. I mean, this is about as hysterical a thing as I've seen in the paper about that. Anyway, I've been on the Improvement Club Board since 1963. We're the ones that plant the daffodils and write the books that you all get for free. And these people work for no pay. We elected them, and they've done a good job. And as far as this trouble, I think if somebody broke the law, then the court should find out and do what needs to be done. And I still live in the United States, where the law is still the law. So I just don't want to hear anymore about this. Really, it's incredible what's happening to our community. And use some common sense. Thank you.
My name is Allison Jiji Deng, and I've lived in Kensington since 1983. When I first lived here, I used to tell people, it's the kind of community where Santa Claus rides around in the police car at Christmas time. And I always liked that, but I have to say, the first thing I want in my police force, and especially the police chief, is that I can trust them. I want honesty. And I do think that the police should be held to a higher standard than the normal Joe off the street, or a higher standard than I hold for myself, because they are the police, and especially the police chief. So that is my priority. I need to be able to trust my police force. They need to be honest, all of them. And yes, maybe they're human, but they have to be a more ethical human than I am, for instance, because of the position of trust in which they function.
We're going to treat this, I think, as the last comment, so that we can go into closed session.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi. I did write you guys a letter following up on my statements at the last meeting about my experience as a former prosecutor and defense attorney, sort of the effects that a police officer with his kind of misconduct has on any investigation that happens in our town.
Could we get your name again? I'm sorry.
My name is Miki Tal, T-A-L. And one of the things that's kind of occurred to me as I thought about this is, why is there this digging in that's happening by some of the board members that's creating this adversarial relationship between the community and you guys? It should actually be a sense that we're all maybe a part of the same company or something, and we're making a hiring decision. It's almost like you're looking at resumes or something, and you're like, I'm going to hire a police officer, someone who's going to protect my community. Let's see. Okay, there's this guy, he went to this school, he has had this many years of experience. Oh, look, he went to a prostitute, and his gun was stolen from him, and then he had to go, and the pimp shot himself in the leg with the gun. Maybe that's not the best candidate. I mean, you are facing right now a situation where you are either going to sign this contract or not with the best candidates, and that's what this should be. This should not be about this element of adversarial relationship between the community and you guys. This is something that you guys should be just as concerned about, and there shouldn't be the sense that you feel there's a mob mentality or something that is going against you, because really, this is for your benefit, too, to have the best candidates and the best people serving. So I just kind of wanted to point that out to you. Thank you.
Okay.
For the public record, I want to submit, thank you to anyone who sent me an email. Many folks couldn't be here in time, so they submitted emails to the public record.
Thank you, Ashelle. Okay, I want to, first of all, apologize for being late, and thank everybody for coming tonight to give your comments, obviously very heartfelt, even though there's not exactly complete agreement. There seem to be some threads here that are pretty common. So we're going to, at this time, we're going to break and go into closed session. Not sure when we're going to get out. I imagine it'll be, let's see, it's what is it now? It's quarter to nine. If we're lucky, nine thirty, but probably more like 10. And I want to remind you all, we have another closed session following that to go into the WestNet matter.
Are there public comments to do with that?
Yes, actually, there are. So we'll close at this time, go to closed session.
I have a brief statement I'd like to make before President Welsh announces our business in closed session. Many of you don't know this, but I'm a daughter of a peace officer, and I have many peace officers in my family. And this has been the most devastating week I've ever had in my public service career. We take no joy in hearing you and your concerns, but we respect them, and we thank you. And I'd also ask that tonight, that we move forward in a way that demonstrates to the greater public the kind of people we are, and that is thoughtful and civilized and respectful. And with that, I'll turn it over to President Welsh.
Yeah, Lynn is, Lynn is not feeling terrific, given his earlier incident with the dog, so he's asked me to announce our closed session decision. The board met in closed session and took the following action. The chief's contract expired on June 30, 2014, and the board took no formal action at that time to extend the contract. Thus, the chief has been working without a contract since July 1, 2014. At this time, the board has reached a consensus that the chief's contract shall not be extended past May 31, 2015, and that day shall be the last day of his employment with the district. We chose that date to ensure full coverage of the district and supervision of his personnel, as well as a smooth transition to the district's next chief or next structure. So, thank you. We want to thank the chief for his service over the past eight years and his contributions to the district, and wish him well.
Any, any other board member want to comment?
I just want to thank, is this on? I just want to thank the chief for serving this community very well. I've appreciated, I'm doing the best I can with this, okay? I want to thank the chief for his service to the community. I worked with him for three and a half years as president myself. I respect your abilities, and I'm glad I had the chance to work with you. Thank you for your service. We owe you a lot.
I want to echo that. I haven't known the chief as long as Chuck has, but I will tell you this, I've learned quite a bit from him. I have enjoyed working with him, and I'm going to miss him a lot. With that, I guess it is now time for us to go back into our second closed session. And see, that agenda item is conference with legal counsel on an existing case, McDonaldver, I'm sorry? All right, we will, do we have to, okay, do we have a motion to adjourn the first closed session?
I'd like to adjourn.
I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any opposed? The motion passes. So we are about to go into the second session regarding a case, David McDonald versus County of Marin at Al. And I will, at this time, ask if anybody would like to make a public comment before we go into closed session. Hearing none, we'll adjourn to closed session. Go ahead.
The case we're going to look at occurred in 2011, not this year. So some of the questions occurred, will we report anything in the last year? I hope you're all aware of that. I'm sorry, could you repeat that? I'm doing my best to keep it loud. I don't want to kiss this. Crazy. The action in the case we're going to look at now occurred in 2011. We're dealing with incidences in the last 10 months that are unrelated to this case. Are you all aware of that? Because the speaker earlier said something totally contrary. Thank you.
Thank you for clearing that up, Chuck. I'll report out on the last closed session, receipt twice, and information from our attorneys, and no action is taken. So with that, I think we conclude our meeting.
Who is turning?
All in favor?
Aye.
I think those will switch to taxes.